All right. Knowing the time, we're gonna get this meeting started. Can't really hear myself, but... All right. Welcome to a Western Planning Board meeting. My name is Trevor Laubenstein and I'll be chairing this meeting. All meetings are recorded by Westwood Media Center. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to record this meeting? And if so, could you please identify yourself? Seeing no one, as a reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The agenda's available at the back of the room. The meeting will follow the order and the agenda and the meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will then proceed to staff comments. The board members will ask questions of the applicant and in the public will be given the opportunity to comment. When it's time for the public comment period, the chairman will call those wishing to speak to the podium. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by saying your name and address to the record. All comments and questions shall be directed through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. First, are there any changes to the agenda, Abby?
No changes.
All right. Onto item one. This is first item on agendas for you, Summer Street. This is a hearing that has been continued several times. This is a shared driveway special permit public hearing continuing from 5/9, 5/23, and 7/11, 2017. It's the proposal for a property along Common Drive to serve three single-family residences. Is the applicant here and ready to proceed?
The applicant's engineer is here and ready to proceed. For the record, my name is Paul Brodmirckel. I'm with Site Design Professionals and I'm representing Michael and Yvette Mahana on their property off the southerly side of Summer Street, which is just shy of Westfield Street. Since we were here last, we made some very minor changes to the Common Drive Plan. I'm gonna call this the Common Drive Plan because it has this single driveway that is gonna be used for access for all three of the lots. We made the restriction for the use of the so-called emergency access much clearer by specifically stating that it is only for the use of the owners of Lot 8, which is this one here, the Mahanans. No one else can make use of it. We also had two gates at the last meeting, but I had removed the speed bump in the middle because with the two gates, I didn't see any of the speed bump and that resulted in a complaint by Mr. Gillis that we were somehow affecting public safety. So I put it back in again. There is a speed bump between the two gates. We also provided the 50-foot no-cut buffer along the westerly rear boundary and 20 feet along the southerly boundary. That means no cutting of any live trees. And that's essentially, we didn't have a whole lot of changes to make at that point. But the question came up regarding the alternative plan and I've made up a couple of plans to help out in terms of understanding what they look like. This is an A&R plan, which is basically the same lot lines minus the Common Drive. Each of them has adequate frontage on a public way. They have adequate area. They have appropriate shape factors. They comply, basically, to all of Westwood's zoning criteria in this district. This is the alternative to the Common Drive A&R plan. They're both A&Rs. They both have frontage on a public way. This one will simply require three separate driveways because we won't benefit by the shared lot special permit. So here's what those driveways look like. And the question came up the last meeting, how can you do this? Well, we can do it off of Sumner Street. Lot to the rear, which is Lot 9, will use, make use of the Common Drive, which is no longer common. Lot 7 will access off the southerly side of their lot, which is the high end, and it will proceed up to the house with a 15% slope with a leveling area in front of the garage. Lot 8 will require a switchback-type driveway. It too will be 15% in slope and with a leveling area also at the proposed garage area. And that's, of course, for an existing house on Lot 8. That's essentially, your choices are Common Drive right here for the three lots or the A&R plan, simple plan without a Common Drive, three separate driveways. That's what it comes down to. The Common Drive provides certain improvements out back, some of which, many of which benefit the neighbors. But the biggest advantage, which I can see to the Common Drive is you're not gonna have three separate driveways on Summer Street. You'll have just one.
Is there any commentary from staff at this point?
The only comments that I would add is that you have before you an A&R plan creating the two additional lots that could come before you and you would need to sign that. I mean, it meets the requirements under the subdivision control law because it has the minimum required 125 feet of frontage on Summer Street. So I believe that this plan, this special permit for the shared driveway that's before you is, if you approve that, that allows them to proceed with the lots without having to provide the two additional driveways to the individual lots. But if you do not approve this special permit plan, the lots can still be created through this A&R route with the individual driveways.
Anything else from our staff? You're fine, obviously. Okay. Is this actually on? It doesn't feel like it is, so...
Is there...
Is there an alternative or...
Is there another mic?
So I just have one question of clarification. So with the A&R plan you're proposing, you're presenting for our reference effectively at this time, the existing house at Lot 8 would still use it, would still have access, clear access to basically a circular drive that connects to the easement drive or the emergency access road or whatever we're calling it out the back of the lot, effectively.
Right, that'll still be there.
Yep. Okay. Any questions from the board? Or comments?
So where was the applicant's position on removing the pavement or releasing the easement? What was the...
The owner did not find that to be a plausible alternative.
Excuse me, I'm Paul Sol, the applicant. He did speak to... I did speak to Michael Mahana and he said he's willing to sell the easement. You know, when he purchased the property, it was part of the property. It has a certain value and he's willing to sell it to the neighbor if they're interested. But he's not, he doesn't wanna remove the driveway. They're actually in Lebanon right now, but he did communicate to me. Thank you.
Is it for, so is it for sale now or he's considered...
He's open to, yeah, offers to sell the easement.
Does he have a value set for that?
He didn't give me any specific price, no.
Is he planning on selling that to one of the other two property owners?
No, he has no interest in doing that. He doesn't want people coming across his property to go up the back. Doesn't make any sense to do that.
I agree.
No, wait a minute, I don't understand that at all. He, we're asking about selling the easement that goes through the other people's property. That's what he has.
Yes, to...
He doesn't have an easement on his own property. That's his role on his property. He has an easement into the, to other people's lots out to Westfield Street.
Westfield Street, yes, that's correct.
So that's what he's interested in selling, correct?
He's open to selling it. He's not, you know, if the neighbor was, wanted to purchase it, that...
So obviously, the obvious purchase, I mean, what is it? It goes through which lot there? It goes through Lot 4 or...
It goes through 8 only. It's only on 8.
Lot 8.
It comes up to Lot 8.
So the obvious purchase of that would be you own Lot 8. No, anyone could if they wanted to. But I don't, but they would have no other... No one would have...
I think it's, I think, Mr. Gillis's, who he assumes would be the person interested. But he's not outwardly advocating that, but if Mr. Gillis's interests are making off, he'd consider it.
So well, to me, this is the only solution. Unless we have two members of the planning board change their vote here. I think this is the only solution we have is for the... We own Lot 8. To sell it to, well, we're using those to what? Lot 4 on that plan?
It only goes, it only, it bots 8. It doesn't go through either one. It comes up to...
Lot 3 on the plan.
Oh, it's down.
Lot 3 on Westfield Street.
Yeah, the Gillis, the Gillis, yes.
So it's on Lot 3.
Between 3 and 4, it looks like, yeah. It only comes up to Lot 8, though.
Right.
Only Lot 8 has access to it. Which is 480 something.
Well, that's not exactly true because it comes up to the circular portion of the driveway.
It's private property.
It continues on, I understand. But everybody has access on, right, driving on the road.
They don't have access to that. It's private property. Does your neighbor drive on your property? I don't...
Either or, but we don't share the driveway either.
They're not sharing the driveway up there. You're only sharing the driveway down to the street.
This is the Mahanans' easement over the Gillis property. It starts at Westfield Street and ends here. The driveway on here is not an easement. That's simply an access driveway that exists on Mahana's property.
Up to the easement?
Up to the easement. This is what's for sale from here to here.
So...
So there's no idea what the sale price would be on that?
The question is, Mr. Gillis, has Mr. Gillis offered anything or spoken to?
The Mahanans weren't looking to sell their rights to that easement. It was there when they purchased the property. It has a certain value, but they're willing to consider an offer from Mr. Gillis. That's the way they left it. So they're, as far as I know, they're still in Lebanon and they're not around, but... But, I mean, this really comes down to, does the town wanna see three driveways out to Summer Street or do they want one driveway? Because there's three lots there. It's the exact same layouts on all three lots. With the, with the shared driveway plan, you got to set conditions as part of the special permit process. Under the A&R, there is no conditions gonna be set. So the board really decides they want one or three driveways. And if it's one driveway, they can set conditions. With three driveways, you don't get to set conditions. So it seems like it benefits the neighbors to have the shared driveway approved because then this board can set conditions on the Mahanans and the future owners of the property.
I fully agree and I think it is in the best interest of the town to have a shared driveway rather than three driveways and two new driveways on Ascenic Road, which would do a lot of damage to use the grading that needs to be done, the filling, that show along.
Tree removal.
The extensive tree removal, extension, extensive fill to get that gray. So I fully agree that it's in the best interest of the town to have a shared driveway instead of three driveways on Summer Street. But right now, unless we take another vote on Mr. Gillis, so unless a member of the planning board is going to change their vote, then I would suggest that we just continue this hearing until such time as there's an opportunity for the... Mr. Gillis or anyone else who's interested in buying that easement property to make those arrangements.
Well, I have a couple of thoughts. I'm not excited about that option because basically they're asking the neighbor who is concerned about this to pay a bunch of money so that their concern will be less. So that's, that always was available as an option. But I went back to the zoning bylaws and I just thought about this over the last few weeks. And basically, if we are looking at shared driveways, there are a couple of conditions here. We have authorization shall be granted only if the planning board determines that the arrangement improves public safety, such as reducing the number of curb cuts, et cetera, or serves as environmental protection and that it's more advantageous to the neighborhood than separate driveways. And further, that the board finds that the use of the shared driveway doesn't circumvent the intent of the subdivision control law. On that second point, I think we all agree and we find that it is not subverting the intent of the subdivision control law because we have an A&R plan in front of us. There's adequate frontage, so that part of it is not a problem. The other pieces of this, we could clearly grant this because of the curb cuts and the environmental protection. And the only issue has been the overburdening. For me, the only issue has been the overburdening of the easement. I went back out there and I looked at the property a couple of times and, you know, it looks challenging to build there, but I don't know. I mean, that's all hypothetical, what will ultimately happen with that. But what I do know is that it's a very rural area. It does seem more appropriate to me that there would be a shared driveway versus having three driveways going into properties there. And when I look at all the conditions again that we came up with, I think that it does serve the better, the interest of protecting the environment in this area in particular. I just, I remain concerned, though. What is, is there any enforcement on this? Like, what if there's like trucks going back and forth on that, across that shared driveway? I guess there can be fines and things, but I think that's it, right? I mean, we're not, we couldn't, can we pull the permit back if we found out there was like gross violation of it? I mean, how would that work?
No, I mean, once, I mean, if it's constructed, they would have to follow the approval. But, I mean, enforcement would be to contact the building commissioner or planning office and to enforce the planning board's approval, which we can do usually. We will notify someone right away. If we saw something when it was going on early on, I could easily contact the owners and applicant. And then the building commissioner sends a violation notice. And we just increase that to, up to, can be up to, and for repeat violations, up to $300 a day for any violation.
So I guess, so I'm open to reconsidering it now. I think that it, I'd like to hear what other board members think, but I think that the conditions also imposed on this would prevent, you know, it would bar them from having, adding driveways in the future. And there are a lot of other restrictions on this that we get through granting the permit, the special permit. And I do think it's worth noting that if we didn't do this, it sounds like they could do the additional curb cuts and they could keep the shared driveway in there if they wanted to and you might still have the same conditions that you have today. So it's really about balancing the potential for lots of bad things to happen versus kind of what we have in front of us. And then, so I fall back on, we have some reasons to approve it here. We could expect that there could be other applications like this from other residents who want to do a shared driveway. And I'm inclined to reconsider my position on this from the last vote.
Now, the one thing, I was, Dave, as far as the road itself, because we talk about the fact that it's paved, so it's a nice smooth surface for an exit access. And then we have the single speed bump in the center. We have the two arms that are latched by plastic ties.
Plastic tie.
So the intent is to try to mitigate the desire. And I guess if you get to the end, you do have to get out of the car, but the history of the easement is, I thought it was challenging in the beginning of this hearing for the overuse, the latch for it open. Is there anything else that you can do to the easement? I mean, we talked about removal of the...
Well, I think, I mean, I don't know. I don't know what, it baffles me what's gonna be constructive there, having two gates and speed bump. I mean, it just sounds like, who would want that in their backyard? But, maybe after all is said and done, they, why would anyone want that in their backyard? It's not even very good. At that point, it's not even good for the one lot to use as an exit. So I remain skeptical about the whole thing, but, you know, that's...
They would be subject to their $300 a day fine. We wouldn't even have to catch someone actually using it. You just go up there and the gate is open. The plastic, the two plastic tires are not there. Any one of those things would be caused for issuing a $300 fine.
Does the town follow through with those types of, I mean, that seems pretty steep. Can a homeowner ignore those as the fines go up and what is the...
Yep. Well, no, they shouldn't. And that's why we actually just changed the zoning to increase it from, it was at max at $100 a day to the 300. And we just got approval from the AG about a week ago. So we haven't implemented that, but yes, the intent was to increase that for repeat offenders with this new policy to get timely compliance and to stop people from repeating those offenses.
And what does that max owe them?
Um... There's no max.
$300 a day is $300 a day.
300 times 365.
I don't know if that includes Saturdays and Sundays.
They're worth $100,000 a year.
Maybe you could do it. The building commissioner told him he's ready to work, stop every single day and the gate is open and we'll have a ticket. Go on to work and that will be certainly worthwhile, the time that it'll take him to do that.
I mean, they're ten, to impose, you know, issue a ticket is to get compliance and to prevent it from happening again. So it's not to take in money, but we like to stop the violation from happening.
No, I know, but there is, there is history where some individuals, they just say, "No, I'm not paying" and they take, they can push it. I'm not saying that this is the case, obviously, but that's why I'm asking the question. I have one other question for, as far as the building. So the, so the shared driveway where it goes up to the circle and then it goes out that, towards that easement. I know that there's a, there's a steep slope going towards the right to the, I might as well go up and point to it. I made this over. Yeah, yeah. Is there, so at this point, is it possible to bring this out into their driveway so that, so that these other neighbors aren't gonna go up somebody else's driveway and then out? I know that this is steep here, but that would, this would certainly, if you can, if you connect the driveway to this easement here, these other homeowners are not gonna drive up their driveway as easily.
I think that proposal was put forth at the last meeting.
Yeah, you talked, you talked about that last time, I think, yeah.
I think Phil mentioned it at the last meeting. Is there, have you talked this over with the Mahanans? I think when we just looked at it briefly at the last meeting, it just gave them a shortcut to use the easement and we didn't see a real benefit to doing that because we don't want them using the easement. It's really come down to a neighborhood dispute is what it really is. Probably more than that.
But that, but what...
That's why the pavement stays, in my opinion. I haven't, I don't, I don't, I haven't spoke with Mr. Mahan about it, but that's my opinion. I think we've made it so inconvenient to use it that it's useless to them. But that's not what it's about anymore. It's more symbolic than anything.
You didn't answer my question. So as far as what, if you go that easement driveway over, the other houses will not drive down Lot 8's driveway to connect out. Right now, the other two lots can simply go around that circle and out.
Oh, no, there's a gate right here. There's two gates, there's one...
I'm talking about if the gate is open. So in the, if you, you understand what I'm asking, right?
Right.
Because if it's connected to their driveway, then the other homeowners will not drive up their driveway to get out.
I'm kind of confused because this house is out here. The driveway is 100 feet from Summer Street. Why, why would anybody that lives here want to go all the way back out here to go anyplace? I mean, if you're going someplace, if you wanna go to Needham...
Well, because it's not about the people who live there. It's about all the other people that will come to their houses, the delivery trucks.
This is their private property. Why would they want...
But it's just, it becomes like a cut-through. And if anybody that landscaping...
Honestly, guys, this is, we've gone over this and over this and over this. I hate to interrupt it from my fellow board members, but honestly, I don't, I don't wanna go around in circles tonight, honestly, again.
It seems like my question is not, is not...
Your question was asked and answered last, at last meeting, I believe, when they talked about the steepness of the grading in that zone precludes that drive from being turned up there. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be flip. I'm just, we, this is like Groundhog Day, this, this case, so...
This would be a relatively steep driveway to put in there. But that would mean taking, what, this out and forcing it to go that way? That's not, that's not what we're after. We wanna force them to go this way. That's why the two gates are there.
You good? That's fine.
I did, I wanted, I had a follow-up question, actually. If we, could we, would you mind flipping back to the concept plan for the A&R? Does the concept plan for the A&R, does that reconfigure the existing drive at all or is it just basically leave it as is for the, if you go to the driveway version of that drawing? Sorry.
That existing driveway is gonna be to serve Lot 9.
Right. But it wouldn't, it's not being changed in any way, right? It's just being left as is.
No, there's no need to change it.
Right, there's no need to change it, okay.
It would, it would just peel off right here.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the board and most people in the room know that I share Mr. Olonoff's opinion on this matter. And for me, the A&R plan doesn't necessarily solve any issues, frankly. I mean, to your point, it's a neighborhood, it seems to be boiled down to a neighborhood dispute around this easement, which is now sort of up for grabs in terms of ownership. I could foresee a reality where despite the fact that Lot 8 now has a, another driveway accessing it from Summer Street, that landscape trucks, maintenance people will find their way up that drive on Lot 9 anyway because they're gonna have to get to the backside of that lot. So you have, we have solved it zero, except cutting down a lot of trees and adding more driveways off of Summer Street on this, with this plan, so... Gotta be looking for any more, if there are any more comments from the board. I'd be interested to hear them.
I think one thing, it seems like we have a number of the neighbors here. I would like to hear if they understand what we're trying to do with the, the, the plastic ties, with the speed bump, with the fines. I'd like to hear what, what their concerns are, that they feel that it's not going to be upheld. I wanna know what their, it's when we get to that portion.
Sure. Okay. All right. All right, there's nothing else from the board. I would like to open this up to public comment and I'd like to just emphasize the fact that this public comment period has been open for many months. And if we can avoid rehashing already voiced concerns, that would be great. Aside from any direct questions from the board, that would be very helpful.
Well, just out of brevity, I would just reiterate now all of the arguments we've made in the several meetings that have been recorded, as well as what's been recorded in the minutes so far. I would say that I don't believe that this meeting tonight is proper because it's already been voted upon and reconsidered and I don't think that it's allowed to be continued to this point as a point of order. But I just wanna state that I think that the new plan that I just saw for the first time tonight, I think, requires a permit because it is a shared driveway. It has access to two houses and therefore, just like the plan that was before us before, requires a permit. It's not an A&R without a permit, both of them are A&R plans, but they require the permit because it allows access to parking to several homes. I wanna thank the board for all the steps that it's taken to try and protect the safety and that's always been, it hasn't been a dispute with the neighbor. We haven't had a disagreement with Mr. Mahana for 12 years. We disagree on this point, but otherwise have had a, you know, neighborly relationship. But I question the sale issue because as you people were here two meetings ago, Mr. Mahana was here himself and I think he made it very clear, very emphatically, and it was in the minutes which you approved that he, under no circumstances, was ever selling that easement. And that's been the position for, since what was the first plan was approved, I think, in 2006. So for the past 11, 12 years, he has been steadfast in that belief. And the fact that we don't have a price and we've never heard this before the meeting tonight makes me call into question the veracity of that statement. And at the very least, I agree with Mr. Olonoff's point that if that's what he really believes is true, then we should have the opportunity to at least speak to him to see if in fact that is a valid solution to this problem. The, I do agree that last time they said they couldn't put, remove that driveway because of the wall that's long there and the height. of the wall that's long there and the height. I don't know how you address this, this is a question for the board, but I don't believe there's a restriction here that during construction, that no trucks that are doing any construction, if you were to approve that plan, could use the easement for purposes of getting there. I think that has to be a restriction. And then after the construction, what happens? If the other people use the easement, what are the, what are the, this is a question for the board, what are our ramifications there? How do, if the people who don't have the easement use it, do they get fined? Do they get notified? How do we keep the other two homes in compliance? This is the third meeting where we've requested an opinion from Town Council as to whether or not this subverts the subdivision laws. If you go back and look at your minutes from the very first minute, the proposer of this plan said this is a subdivision and requires a street and requires lighting and requires all the plans, but they wanted to do it as a shared driveway so that they could get around the subdivision laws. I think we should have...
As I said, if you could keep it to the things that we haven't already gone through, that would be great. We all have the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I'm just bringing that up because we still don't have that.
Right, so I'm saying, please, not again.
Okay, it's just a question for the board, why don't we have it?
I believe we have it now, do we not?
Yeah, the Town Council's opinion, yes. The board has Town Council's opinion that responds, saying that this is properly before the planning board as a special permit application. This is not a subdivision application, it does not qualify or meet the definition of a subdivision.
Okay, I was unaware of that.
Sorry.
I appreciate that, thank you. So, I, I'd like to have more time to look at this new plan, just to see if it requires a permit because it is a shared driveway, and if Mr. Mahana, in honesty, wants to sell that easement, I'd like to have an opportunity to at least go through that before we end up in litigation because either way, this is, you know, if Mr. Mahana doesn't get what he wants, he'll be bringing action, and I assume the neighbors don't get what they want, they're going to be bringing in action. So, rather than have all that time, I understand you want to get rid of this, it's been at three meetings already, but it seems that if that's actually a viable option, why wouldn't we pursue it before taking a vote at this point?
My name is Joe Toffeloni, I live at 65 Ridge Road, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I don't have anything further to add from what I've talked about in the prior meetings, but I just wanted to just once again, just express my opposition to the plan, that's all. Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, if you may, I just wanted to note that we did receive, you received the revised plans on August 4th. We did, I provided it to you in your packet on August 4th, and it was updated to the website on, on August 4th. So, we did not distribute the plans, but we posted it to the website at that time. Also, I believe this application is properly before you voted at the last meeting, but you continued the public hearing to this specific date and time. And it was posted on our meeting calendar on our website, right after the last meeting on July 11th.
So, just procedurally, just so everyone in the room is clear, if we, we held a vote last meeting wherein the motion of approval was denied, so effectively that vote stands at this moment in time, is that correct?
No, I mean, you should, we need to vote again, I mean, because the motion to approve failed.
Right. So, we either have to...
You either...
Have to move for, move for denial, or...
As, as I understand, I mean, you can, you can vote, you can bring up, and we're not bound by, you can just, you can never vote on something again.
Right, you can reconsider.
We just, we didn't, we failed to take action by not passing the vote, that motion, so we could close, if we closed the hearing, then it's all, it's, we're done with this until we would have to open another hearing and go through the process again.
Right.
But at this point, we're kind of in a state where we haven't closed the hearing, and it's possible that someone, that someone could make a motion.
Yep.
Yep.
But we would all, and this requires four members to vote.
Yes, a special permit, so you need four affirmative votes for an approval.
And are we required to actually give reasons for denial if we deny it? Do you have a page here for motion for denial, but that's if someone...
Right. You don't have to...
I mean, is it required that we give reasons?
You should, yes. For a deny, you should give a reason.
Because I, again, if I were to go through these reasons and, and try to make them accurate, it would make these reasons for denial look like it shouldn't have been denied. You know, things like, you're saying things like, you know, could, you know, because traffic would be increased, but it's not, would be increased in the right ways, would possibly increase if, and the whole line of ifs that we already went through.
Yeah.
And I won't repeat them all again.
Right.
The dates and everything. So, if we properly did the denial, it would look ridiculous.
And then we had this discussion last time, that the denial looked more like it didn't have enough weight, frankly.
I think, I mean, do we, do people usually vote yes, vote no? Like, I mean, it's, if this came to a, a question of whether the board, you know, what were, what was the basis of our decision, we have all the meeting minutes, we have the recorded meetings and everything, I mean, it would come, become a question of fact as to what was our basis, you know? I don't, I don't see how you could ever get a vote to work, like, let's suppose it was split, and we, we voted, you know, three people voted in favor of it, and then two people vote against it, I mean, neither motion would pass, and so how would you get anything done? So, I think all you can do is someone can make a motion, and we see what happens with that. And there could be a motion to close the hearing, you could be a motion to approve this, or a motion to deny it.
Well, I move that we grant this special permit.
Abby, have, have the conditions that we moved with last time, have they changed, have they changed, I guess?
Let's see, so you have...
We have a substantial list of findings and conditions before us.
Right, so you have, that was...
Which I presume Mr. Olunoff is referencing as movement in his move, motion.
In your...
What conditions here should have a, an eye...
Oh, yeah, an eye, I was missing.
I would, I would add on condition number two, based upon what I heard today, vehicles are allowed access only for personal use and operated by residents of lot eight. No delivery trucks, landscape trucks or trailers, service, and I would add, comma, construction or any other contractor vehicles are permitted to use the easement to access the lot, et cetera. So, I, I think we've gotten everything in there.
Okay. Yep, so this, the draft that you had in your electronic packet, you also have a copy before you tonight, has the 22 conditions modified at your last meeting.
So, so, so my motion is to approve this with those 22 conditions that is just modified.
Second?
All right. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the approval of the shared driveway special permit application of 48th Summer Street, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Vote is four to one, and it passes. Thank you, everybody.
Hi.
Do I hear a motion to close this hearing?
Could I ask that it be kept open at least to the next meeting so I can have the opportunity to speak to Mr. Mahana? It's the first time in 12 years this issue has come up, and if he truthfully wants to discuss that before we file a lawsuit, I'd like to at least have that opportunity, and I don't see why that wouldn't be fair at this time.
I'm not exactly clear why that conversation has anything to do with this board, or this...
I think Mr. Olunoff said it earlier. I mean, what, what is, what is the harm in continuing this to allow, if in fact he wants to sell that easement to the next meeting to close it out and not take a new vote, but just close the meeting so that we could have a meaningful discussion, if he wants to have one, which would alleviate all sorts of expenses for the town in getting council to represent itself at, at a, at a trial on this matter, because it's going to be appealed if we can't work it out? Why would this board want to, instead of wait till the next board meeting, require the town to expend all that money for legal fees that are unnecessary if in fact this can be worked out?
So, we, we just granted a permit for him to do a shared driveway.
Yeah.
He doesn't have to build that shared driveway. He could still go ahead and do the A and R plan with the three driveways. You could still purchase the easement from him regardless, so all those options are open. The granting of this permit, I think, just is exactly that, and it should go forward. It doesn't, there's, there's no need at this time to...
There was no need to continue it to today either, but it was.
That was our decision, to continue it to today, and I agree with Mr. Olunoff, so, anyway, do I hear a motion to close?
I move to close it.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Sorry.
I realized, there were three waivers that were included in this. I don't think you actually voted on them.
Yeah.
Do you think so? It was the traffic impact study, the stormwater report, and exterior lighting plan submissions, I think you...
So, I move that we grant those waivers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to grant the three waivers to be included in the aforementioned approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you, the waivers are unanimously voted as to be, to be part of the approval.
Anything else?
No, I think that was it.
So, I move that we close it here.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. The hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. You're free to go. Thank you. Have a good night.
Do we end up getting...
Yes, you'll get a decision.
When the final thing comes out, we, we'll get it mailed?
Yes.
Is that actually this request yet?
Yep. Yep, you had submitted a request to receive it before, so, yep, we'll get, we'll send a notice when that goes to, has to be finalized, submitted to the town clerk, and then we'll send it to you by mail, and I have your email, I can email it to you.
Okay, so like if somebody were to want to appeal, does the 21-day period start when, like when does that start?
It starts when the decision is submitted to the town clerk, so you'll be notified of that date. So, as soon as it gets stamped in with the town clerk, we immediately mail it to the abbotters notifying you that the start of the 21, the start of the 20 days is begun.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for all the time that you spent on this private development for longer things. Thank you.
We were, we were joking about, we spent as much time on this as we did on the incentive approval, so.
I think you spent more time on this than Brigham and Women, so, thank you again. And everybody have a good rest of the summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, review and discuss possible zoning articles for November town meeting.
Right, so, in your packet, I have a little timeline for a town meeting that I have tonight. So, we've talked before, staff, we weren't, I wasn't proposing any zoning articles at this time since we just did about 11 or 12 the last time. We did just receive Attorney General's approval about a week or so ago, so everything approved at May's town meeting is now official. So, I hate to go and make these changes, you know, two weeks after we just got the approvals. We did receive, let's see, oh, your last meeting, you had the request on High Street. I have not heard back from them. I know they were reaching out to Abbot, so I don't think, yeah, about the parking lot to extend the business zone on High Street. So, last time we checked, you had really left it with encouraging them to talk to the neighbors before coming back to you. So, I think they're still in that process, haven't heard back from them.
How does this, this timeline, it says Monday, 9/11, selectmen and all, like, when does the warrant open and close, it looks like?
Right, so the warrant now is open. The selectmen don't have, their next meeting is the September 11th meeting, so that's when they'll be reviewing all the requests that come in and make a decision as to whether or not they're going to have town meeting, and then if, based on how many articles they receive. So, right now, I haven't brought anything forward to you all, except for we did, you did just receive in your packet a request from a property owner in the Highway Business, A.D. Wilson Way. He, that is an office building, this is the end of the street that was recently accepted by the town. This is the last building at the end of the road past the Frugal Fannies, it's an office building, but he's working on marketing it because the tenants that are in there now are, I think their leases expire, so he's looking to have a new office tenant and may, a new tenant may want to have a cafeteria when we realize, when we're reviewing the zoning bylaw, that cafeteria as an accessory use is not allowed in the Highway Business District. So, he submitted a letter asking you to consider making an amendment to allow cafeteria as an accessory use in the Highway Business Zone. It's allowed in the industrial zones, in the ARO, which is the Administrative Research and Office, and all the other ones I could really think of that we have in town, we have some at the Meditech property, and some other properties, Canton Station Drive, I think.
Across the street at 30 Perrwall, I know there's a cafeteria.
Yes, and I know, and that side of the street is industrial, so...
That side of the street is industrial?
Yeah, Perrwall Street is industrial.
No vending machines on the other side of the street?
Yeah, vending machines, that was a surprise. So, it kind of made us, you know, I thought this might be something worth considering.
Seems a little peculiar that it would be excluded, I guess, I mean, I...
Right.
Not having a cafeteria, that means you can't have vending machines either, or...
Or look at that accessory use, it lists vending machines.
Oh, wow.
Vending machines that sell, dispense food, food or drinks, so...
I bet we could find 50 of those violations in town if we looked.
Well...
I don't know, actually.
I know, I'm not sure, I'm not entirely sure because the accessory use allows snack bar vending machines and things like that, but does that mean you just can't have a vending machine anywhere without, where the accessory use is not allowed? Does that really include any vending machine in any building?
You know, I didn't, I would like, I, the building commissioner's zoning and determination officer is not, was out of the office today, so I, you know, I didn't get to fully review this section with him today when I received this, but I think it might need some tweaking.
Yeah, because it says such as, and so, it says retail use is such as, so if a company wanted to put in a vending machine where food is free, then that's not a retail use and they could do that. It's only if they charge money.
Well, it doesn't say, well...
Retail use.
This is rough. This is rough, yeah.
It implies that it's sold food.
Yeah. But, you know, if he's just giving it away, he wouldn't, if they needed a vending machine.
What about, have, has food trucks, has that come up as, as a topic in Westwood? I know there has been a food truck in Westwood.
Has that come up?
We had one food truck that was licensed last year, and they did not choose to get their license renewed this year. I know that the health director has talked several times about, they've received calls from different people about food trucks over in, I don't know, Westwood, Danham, or Norwood, I think, right on the property line, but they're not licensed in Westwood. None of any food trucks that are licensed.
The one that we had, was that through the Board of Selectmen's office? So, is that a...
Selectmen's is the licensing authority for food trucks.
Okay, for like, is that a common, is that a common vehicle license?
No, it actually is a food truck.
Food truck, okay, so we have a food truck license, but not addressed to our zoning?
So, so, so the selectmen's matter, if, if, if the selectman wanted to license food trucks, and they would specify where they could go, and they could go anywhere regardless of what the zoning was.
If that's the way it's, I'm not sure what their policy is.
Yeah, I'm sure their license would say, give them certain areas to go. Yeah, I'm sure their license would say, give them certain areas to go in those areas.
Right. I think, right, we do it as specific.
Regardless of what the zoning is.
Yeah.
I mean, they may use the zoning of the guy, but they wouldn't be restricted.
Right.
Abby, do you have any history with regards to the way that this is written in the bylaws? Like why you would...
No.
...want it to be enough?
I'm not sure. I mean, my first thought was maybe if this was intentional, that it was to encourage employees to visit the local restaurants.
That could be it.
So I don't know if that was it, or if it was just inadvertently that it was the highway business wasn't included.
I would say it's more likely that they didn't think there would be office buildings in the highway business area. Therefore, there wouldn't be cafeterias needed, and they just left it out.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the trend of... Well, no, but we... Sorry, we allowed in industrial, but not in this. That's what we're saying.
Right, and the ARO.
Yeah, that's a little unusual.
Now there are actual automobile dealerships along Route 1 which have cafeterias which are open to anybody.
Right, right.
So obviously, that wasn't thought of either when they just said industrial and ARO, but not highway business. I think it was just an omission.
Abby, open to it.
Okay. And I know, you know, I was kind of hoping we would... You would consider, you know, proposing zoning changes at one time at Spring Town Meeting. But I know this property owner is looking to market the building right now to have new tenants in place for next year.
Well, this is usually part of like, it'll... Something like this would typically, if he's thinking of doing modifications to the building, it's typically, it's a standard-like improvement, an amenity improvement to offer that in the building. It's being done all over the place in terms of these kind of older commercial spaces all over the state. So I certainly wouldn't have a problem with it. And oftentimes, I mean, I don't know what kind of tenants they're targeting, but I mean, frequently, those... These could be a more... Simply, some of these cafeterias are offered as more cost-effective for a certain income level employees kind of thing as well, which is something we shouldn't, you know, quash necessarily, I would say. But anyway, those are my thoughts.
So I know we've discussed with Abby that for us to put forward one article would be very inefficient. Inefficient use of her time and the board's time in going to the FinCom with just one article. Nevertheless, it does involve business in the community and the planning board being business friendly. So we should make that effort.
Right, and if the board is amendable, you know, I could... I always have like a running list of other updates. So maybe I could pull some of the easier, one or two couple, you know, the housekeeping, smaller, easier ones that won't take a heavy load. For example, I know we don't have a clear definition on... We have medical center. We have like doctor's office, but we don't clarify what happens at those. I kind of noticed that when we were reviewing Brigham's. We don't have things for like a day surgery or something kind of specific where it's not overnight. So that might be something to check those definitions and make sure it's clear definitions for the medical office doctors, you know, kind of, I don't know, surgical center, I think. Someone had asked recently about like a day surgery location and where they relocated. So we don't have a clear definition of that. So if you... If the planning board wants, if you're interested in bringing this one forward, we were at the next meeting on the 5th, I could just pull together a few, a couple more, just to check if there's any of those low-hanging fruit, easier ones. So Fall Town Meeting is not as long a process as the Spring Town Meeting. So there's... You would essentially for... After your next meeting, the next day, we'd submit it. Usually just the sentence for each zoning article, what you're proposing. If there's a town meeting, then usually myself and the board chairman attends two meetings in September with the FinCom to just introduce the articles. And then there's a public hearing that you all usually attend in October, October 17th with the FinCom. And usually, that's done either in one night or continued to the following night, and then town meeting on the 13th.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess, and I would be more inclined to support this one ahead of the High Street one. Just that one felt... The more I thought about that, the one that felt problematic to me for it to be proposed by the board. Simply because it just seemed a little too similar to some of the other recent issues in town and, like, I guess, anyway. So that feels like one that's more complicated. Some of them seems fairly straightforward. I guess that's what my point is.
And then, you know, another discussion I know would be response to, or relooking at the FMUD zones. I know I've talked a little bit with Nora because at some of the recent Board of Selectmen meetings, the Islington Center Task Force meetings, and what you experienced in this winter and spring. You know, trying to think about easing people's concerns about the topics centered on residential in the Washington and High Street FMUD zones. And we've received requests from residents asking if we'd consider a cap on the residential. You know, when we talked before, we don't typically put a cap on residential. We usually leave it... We limit it by having lot sizes or the zoning restrictions. And in the FMUDs, we tie... We have the residential maximum of no more than 50% of the gross square floor area of an individual project. So that's what the zoning... That's how it operates today. But I know I talked a little bit with Nora about trying to take a comprehensive look at the amount of residential in the FMUD zones of what full buildout is and then what's reasonable. So we weren't proposing anything right now, but I know I want to review it Nora a little bit more. She's away right now. But trying to look at what that figure might be if it were to come forward.
Yeah, and that does also seem to be in line with what the selectmen are thinking as well for those.
That's interesting. How would we go about trying to figure it out? Would we have to have a study of some sort by somebody to do like, almost like a mock plan or something to that effect to see what the max could be under the zoning and then maybe compare to what feels right?
Yeah, it would be a rough estimate, yeah, of what... Look at the... So we'd have to look at the individual properties in those zones of where it's allowed and essentially what that could realistically be.
Yeah, because it does seem to be the concern. Whenever I talk to neighbors, it's always, they wonder what next. So even if you look at Roach Brothers, Roach Brothers is owned for multi-use. So that's a lot of apartments. So if you don't cap it, I think it might help with some of the discussions in the future about multi-use buildings if neighbors know that there's a maximum at some point.
Well, there always is a maximum, and they do do full buildout studies.
There is no maximum right now, Steve.
Yes, there is. It's... It's... You take our zoning bylaws and you have the acreage involved, and you have how much you could put down for square footage, for lot coverage, for parking requirement, for all these things. And that 50% limitation, all those things, you put them together, and you could calculate what the maximum buildout is.
And I guarantee that we... Do you know how many? We'd fill this room with hundreds of neighbors who... That maximum is quite high. What I'm talking about is a reasonable maximum.
Well...
I know you can do a calculation.
Yeah, but before you want to do that, you want to say, okay, well, what would the maximum buildout be unless... You don't know. So I think that's the first step to do something like that.
Well, you could do it like accessory apartments, but it would be apartments, no more than 1% or half a percent or some number, you know. I get the... We've heard the argument a number of times about the calculations, but see, people don't... It's complicated, you know. So someone could say, oh, I did a calculation, and there could be 500 apartments. And then someone else will say, no, according to this, this, and this, it could be 200. So I mean, there's some value to, if you just set a number out there, and then it would eliminate the sort of debate over that. Of course, that'd be hard to set that number because as soon as you put a number out there, it would be...
But I don't know where any way we're planning is, and zoning is done that way.
So I'd be curious to know, does anyone ever tried that?
In Westwood, we're going to have a maximum of 5,000 homes, period. And I don't even know if something like that would hold up. You determine lot sizes, then your restrictions within the lot sizes, and that ends up determining what your maximum buildout is going to be. Just setting a strict number on it is, I don't know whether it's done anywhere.
Well, I think the thing that had the most, that I heard the most people agreeing with when there was a lot of back and forth was the feeling that they shouldn't be able... A developer shouldn't be able to use multiple properties and stack things up. That that kind of idea, you know, was something that... And so maybe not just saying a number, but saying that, you know, you can have 50% in a building or something like that, or one floor, you know, some kind of...
That's what we do. And that's why, and that's the effort and the flexible amount that we use over like district. We create that flexibility. That flexibility means that you may get a little bit more than you expected. But that's why the planning board and the special permit authority has the ability to say no, to say you want something smaller.
I think they don't. People seem to not to want the flex, the dimensional flexibility. Like if you might be okay with abundant, with a line of two stories with residential on top and shops underneath, but when you turn it into a three-story building and a one-story building, people felt, especially across the street, you know, that was kind of...
And we did have some amendments we were thinking about at the last minute there. I think it makes more sense to review some of that and see, okay, is our conditions in the FMUD strong enough? And could we make them more, you know, slightly less flexible? Eliminate some of these things. I think, you know, the height consideration was a big consideration. So you can just look at that. And I think those things will be better, and that's more appropriate planning and zoning than just creating some kind of artificial cap.
All right, so I mean, if you... So I could continue to work with Nora. Well, she's away right now. But we'll come back at the next meeting if we can pull together some more thoughts on...
Kind of an unusual approach to planning residential, to not have it be driven by FAR and by lot coverage and parking and everything else, but...
And then what about the footnote issue that came up at the spring meeting where it sounded... When you dig into the history of it, it sounded like that footnote was applying to...
Right, so maybe we could...
Zone.
Right, so maybe I think that footnote needed... The way the footnote's in there now could be strengthened. I just...
Yeah, the footnote was...
It was, um... Yes, I think there's like an "and" where there shouldn't be an "and".
Maybe we could straighten out that footnote so it does exactly what we really wanted to do.
We propose changing a footnote. I don't know, that might...
Yeah.
There's certain pages in the zoning book that we should just have always printed on yellow paper just so we don't like warp ourselves into...
Right.
And I'm not saying we'll change the footnote, clarify the footnote.
Footnote to matches intent that we want. Because, right, it's written so that its minimum project area shall include contiguous parcels and parcels separated by roadway or railroad right of way that are effectively contiguous. The intent of the footnote wasn't to expand projects across the street, but we had put that in because one of the university stations, or sorry, University Ave properties went across the railroad right of way. So that's why we had put that in there. So we could take another look at that one.
Was the intention ever to do across the street? I mean, because...
Um...
Because...
I mean, when we were looking at that...
You're just straightening out the requirements over a larger property, and that property doesn't have to be contiguous. And I thought we were okay with that basic concept.
Yeah, I mean, when you think of university station area and University Ave, that's where the exact language came from is, I think, across the road away.
All the FMUDs, it was intended for universities.
Yeah, so we had added that.
It wasn't intended to be applied to...
Well, we wrote it in, right, but we put it in FMUD, and it was written this way also as an additional last-minute add. We thought, okay, that helps clarify of why the one project we had had the two projects, two properties that were next to each other and help clarify that's why they would be included in a project. So maybe also, maybe including something in your Section 7.3, which is your EIDR or something about, or definition for projects or...
And that adds to your point, Dave, the whole idea where you can add more square footage to an overall project, jumping streets. And then you get a single, single story and then another larger structure across the street.
Yeah, so what you're objecting to is having a unevenness from one side of the street. You have a large building on one side, a small building on the other, and you'd rather see two kind of evenly sized buildings on the other side of the street.
I would.
And, you know, that's, that's, that sounds reasonable. But again, we can always, you know, the planning board has the right to say no when developments where they, you know, that would be a valid thing, that the buildings are too opposite in size like that. But if you want to establish that in the zoning bylaw, it's a possibility.
The thing is, though, you could also go, let's say you have these two lots. You can't go into special permit unless you combine them to be large enough, okay? So now you have this situation of two, two stories, three in one, or even, you know, a big building and a park. You know, it's the flexibility. Doesn't have to mean that you're using a parcel to allow you to build a big apartment complex. It could be that you are... It allows us to say, we want to have more open space, and so we want to have a higher building with the residential. I mean, it can go both ways, is the thing. And if you, if you, I'm arguing against myself now. If you lock it down to say two-story only, then there's no room for any open space because you don't have the ability to be flexible with the dimensions. And it all comes back to whether or not people have, trust the planning board to like, to work these things through in the best interest of the community, so...
That's why we have the effort in the FMUD to have that flexibility. So we restrict ourselves because we always have... They have the flexibility of proposing, but we also have the flexibility of saying no. And if it is something good, like a building and a lot of open space, then we can say yes to that. If it's just something where it just doesn't match, it doesn't work well, then we can say no to that.
The problem is, we're not seeing a whole lot of open space.
Well, I think I... I'm shooting from the hip here, but I think the, hearing you draw that analogy, I mean, our heart limit probably quashes most of that conceptual process.
We're not going to have a five-story.
You can't go to three, really, or five, which would give you the FAR swap, which is going to generate open space, but...
Right, 36 feet is the limit.
So...
I don't know.
Anyway, so back to... So yeah, I would say if we're going to push the Highway 1 here, we should come up with a few housekeeping ones to ride as coattails, and something, nothing else is going to come up. It's too arduous.
Okay.
Spring was really fun, but we could try to tamp it down a notch for the fall. There aren't any other, none of these, no other petitions floating around, are there, that we caught wind of?
No.
All right.
And again, I keep trying to remind everyone, because I know when we had that charter review, there was an emphasis on if someone wants to present a petition article, they should go to Tom McCusker to get it reviewed to make sure it makes sense and can legally make sense and be reasonable. But I also really think that any... But I also really think that any respective petitioner should come before the Planning Board and have a discussion with us.
Right.
And they are absolutely welcome to do that. I keep urging them to do that because in the past, we've had petition articles which the Planning Board favored, and yet when it came before the board, we had to get up there and make amendments to it just to get it to come out right, because they hadn't had that discussion with the board first.
Right, we do always encourage everyone to come to talk to staff first and then also talk to the Planning Board. I don't know if you saw, we recently added, expanded our FAQs on our website, and we have a whole, added a how to change a zoning section, and we have a zoning flow chart on there and to help with the process. And right away, it says, you know, please contact staff for review and contact, and then we invite them to attend a Planning Board meeting to talk to you, which is why at the last minute, you had the discussion on the high street parking lot.
Because there were issues with a, an amendment at spring meeting, or some had the opinion of that with the, the buying, buying, renovating, and selling within a certain timeframe, and some felt that was an issue with, the language wasn't, wasn't quite there. If you had the exact, the exact article. It had to do with the whole flipping of.
The demo deleted.
Oh, yeah, the moratorium, right.
Yeah, it seemed like that, that was too restrictive, I don't know what would have.
Right, and that was why we'd encourage, because that one was submitted unexpectedly, you know, I, none of us had heard about it until it was all of a sudden, before the board of selectmen, and that one had, it had typos written in it, so that's what, it was confusing. It said like three-year moratorium in one place, and then it said one-year moratorium below. But once a petition article is submitted, it's right at that deadline.
On the floor, they were trying to fix it.
Yeah, so that's why we encourage coming in first and having it at least be written in a way.
All right, there's nothing else on that? Other business, do we have any upcoming ZBA apps, ZBA apps that we should be aware of?
Not yet, I haven't received them. I know their deadline disclosed for their September twentieth meeting, but I know that they did receive an application for ground-mounted solar at EverSource, that's on Station Drive, the top of the hill, behind University Station. So they also filed with you, so we'll be getting you that application soon too, because it'll be an EIDR with you since it's commercial. So that will be on your September nineteenth meeting, and then.
Whereabouts on the property?
Oh, sorry, it's over the whole parking lot, having those canopies. So the canopy's over the entire parking lot, so it's huge, it's like.
Can we approve that, can we approve that right now?
So it'll be the first application of this kind in Westwood. It'll be huge, so you'll be getting that application soon. Yes, yep.
And they're having, they're putting them in other, we wanted to do it at the high school here, but that didn't seem to make it. But I, I'm pretty sure there are other schools that are putting on their parking lot. Would have been nice to have it on the parking lot at the high school where we have Westwood Day. We wouldn't need all those tents to put up, just be underneath the, the whole panels.
Yeah, the one I was, the one I'd vied for, you know, it's not in Westwood, but the Dedham, the Dedham Corporate Center parking lot that goes along with the MBTA station, which that parking lot's a wreck to begin with, it has many issues, but that would be a, I love to see, that would be a prime candidate. Okay, do we have any decisions or hearings?
Yeah, so I'm just going to pass around just the cover page of the four-eighty Summer Street special permit for you to review, so I think not, Brian doesn't need to sign it. Should I move on while you're signing that? The open space and recreation plan, we have an open.
Sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
Sorry, it says, "Plan Board has voted in favor to grant the application of coastal development as a voted on August twenty-two and filed in the office of the Town Clerk on March twenty-third." Is that really filed on March twenty-third?
That was when the application was filed.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, it was that long ago. We have an open space and recreation plan that reviews the land that we have in town and has a number of, you know, goals and objectives and plans and review of the properties in town. That was last approved by you in two thousand, so we're working on pulling together a steering committee or open space, yeah, steering committee that would act as a task force over this next year to bring forward, back to you for approval, an updated open space plan. They've asked for a Planning Board representative, they asked for one, but I think in the past, you've had two. I know Steve suggested having two members. So I don't know if one or two of you, if you're interested in serving that. So it'll be mostly probably meeting over this year, I don't know the timeframe, but I think their goal is to try to start reviewing updates and have some public outreach meetings.
That'd be, that'd be interesting.
Until the spring, okay.
So I've been on it in the past, and since I'm promoting a trail program for the town, and that would be appropriate to be part of that plan, so, and that's why I thought I should be on it.
Is anyone else interested? Keep in mind, I know I keep wanting to circle back to updating a comprehensive plan too, so I, you know, one, for the comprehensive plan, we would need to have a steering committee for that as well. I'm not quite ready to move forward with that yet, because we're done that way.
There was a committee that I was on a long time ago that did their part of that plan.
The transportation piece has done very well for the pedestrian and bike safety committee has, has worked hard, so.
Now, the town of Lexington has voted to update their comprehensive plan, and they appropriated, I believe it's three hundred and two thousand dollars to do it.
Well, we have not appropriated three hundred and two thousand dollars.
How much, you know, what the appropriate, what's the appropriation, because I saw it in the paper, for the open space and recreation plan.
Oh, I don't remember, I know, right, because we're hiring our consultant to help with the public outreach portion. I don't remember what that, that is right now.
Oh, he's not doing the writing, he's just doing the public outreach?
I believe that's, I believe that's the main focus of it. So it's not, it's not a full, the consultant's not going to be doing all of it. I think their main focus is going to be the outreach and facilitating the public meetings.
Can we, what are, what are your thoughts on using the MAPC resources on stuff like that? I think that would be getting like their citizen engagement people, and I mean, there's lots that I think, versus, maybe for this, it's just one consultant person, but.
Yeah, and actually, are they informed of that, so that they can put in a bid? Because they, they.
I'm not sure.
Or.
I would think they would, I don't know. Not me.
We have a list of, I saw the list that Nora had sent, or asked the procurement officer to send the RFP to. I don't believe the MAPC was on there, they were private.
I would recommend for the, for the big, for the comprehensive plan, working with somebody like the MAPC could help make it a, kind of bring in some insight from other communities, and I think also, they might have some ideas on how to more engage with people that aren't usually part of the process and everything.
Oh, yeah, yeah, certainly some more regional perspective would be helpful, I think, especially if you start to read the old plan, it starts to feel a little, I don't know, isolated in a way, but.
Okay.
So do you need, so do you need me to appoint or something that, well, going back to open space, going back to open space, do I need to, like, do I need to appoint these guys or something?
Yeah, I think you should appoint, yeah, right, so it would be essentially serving as Planning Board representatives, so sort of a subcommittee on, yeah, on the steering committee.
Right.
And then, anyone that's interested when we get to the comprehensive plan, which, you might be, the whole committee, right. Okay, because you have.
Subcommittees, again, and, and members could be in one or more of each of those subcommittees.
Yeah, and I know we're going to ask to, is it a task force to look at the, isn't in section of that?
Right, because the comprehensive plan has village district, housing piece, transportation, conservation, open space, it's all in economic development, so you'll all be serving in different capacities for the comprehensive plan update when we do.
Are we, are we driving that, or is, I mean, kind of what I'm thinking is, we should appoint that, or we should, the Planning Board? I, I just don't know, like, who's responsible for it, and I think it would be helpful if it was driven by a board.
Well, it's always done by the Planning Board. The Planning Board is always, it does that, and we, when we did it in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, because it, it was a pretty extensive thing. The Planning Board was, was, is doing it, we had a consultant, and the consultant did most of the writing based upon what he heard at the various committee, subcommittee meetings. And it was extensive public involvement, so that public involvement included all the other boards of town and individual citizens who are active and serving on those individual subcommittees.
Right, so it really is driven by the Planning Board, but we have a comprehensive plan steering committee. Or, or there is different ways to do it, you have like one steering committee, or you have, yeah, several, which is what we had started before, having one focus on economic development and then housing, and then you all come together as.
What's, what do we, what do we need to do to get it, so what kind of, what are we waiting on, or what is the?
What we're waiting on is probably me, I think, because, well, there's a lot of data that needs to be updated, that's the data and organizing and facilitating all the public meetings and then doing all the writing. So we don't have a consultant, so that's something I would have to do with your help, but. That's why I was hoping we wouldn't have too many zoning changes, so that's why, in the fall, but it's, it's mostly updating that information, since a lot has changed in Westwood since two thousand, but updating the data portion, but then pulling together the committees, doing the visioning sessions, you know, creating the goals and objectives based on those meetings, and then actually writing it and tying it all together.
What is, what is, what's the primary role of the consultant in that, or is it up to, up to us to figure out what a consultant's contribution is to that whole process?
We're not hiring consultants, so it's.
Not hiring consultants, all right, sorry. So nothing, yeah.
See, the big difference between over three hundred thousand dollars to do something.
Well, right, versus zero.
On our own, it becomes really, so, so the consultant, the best, they a hundred percent did the.
Yeah.
They did a lot of the organization, organizing for things like getting residents together and having.
Meetings and.
Workshops and.
Chorrets and.
Doing all of that, and in addition, they would listen and take notes so that they could compile what it was, and then they actually did the, the final writing with the approval of the individual committee.
Right.
Right, and generally, I mean, ideally, it should be done within one to two years. Ultimately, it gets, well, it comes back to the various committees, but the Planning Board approves it, and then you take it to town meeting for adoption. It's really town meeting, I don't think it's, it's more of a, it's not a two-thirds voter, it just, it kind of adopted at town meeting. But that should all be done between one to two years, otherwise, it kind of falls off, so it needs to be, so that's what you've probably been waiting for, because it takes, you have to really commit to it and do it, otherwise people lose interest, so it has to be while people are engaged and on top of it, and you have to be able to keep up with it. It's, it's, because you want to provide the opportunities for people to weigh in, and you need to.
Yeah, well, I think it's, I mean, yeah, it's definitely needs a, it needs, I think, to be a, something where you bring in someone who manages it quickly, you know, so that it's, it's not just something that you do for the next two years, in addition to everything else.
I mean, it is an update, we have a comprehensive plan already, so it's an update, it's not, it's not written from, this one isn't written from scratch, it is an update, but there is material to be updated.
Sorry, are we trying to act, are we trying to act here?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yep, open space, open space, and then we will come back to the comprehensive plan.
All right, so I'll, I'd like to appoint Steve Olinoff and Brian Gorman to the open space steering committee. And then the comprehensive plan, I mean, should we just discuss this at next meeting, maybe, or? I'm a little unclear, are we?
Okay, you don't have to do anything on that right now, we can just circle back to that when I'm, when we're ready.
I guess maybe I, maybe I'd just like to understand a little bit more about what, what the process is, I mean, we don't need to do that right now, it's starting to get late, we don't need to kill ourselves tonight, but, like, what we think the actual process is for that, so the board members understand what the commitment is and involvement.
Mr. Chairman, can I add that I found the amount that is appropriated for the open space recreation plan is twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why this small, right, so their focus probably is facilitating the public meetings, I think, and handling the public meetings. That was my impression, but, I'm sorry, I was away the last, so I think I left before this was issued.
It's really more the data collection.
Oh, they're doing the data collection, okay.
It's not a lot of money to do much of anything.
Hans is providing, the GIS analyst is providing.
Oh, maps, okay.
The data, and then the, the proposals will be based on that.
Okay.
Because they have to dig into these and things like that.
Well, they, they had that from the last, I mean, you know, like, you know, what's, what's the conservation land, what's all the recreational land? The big, the big change, I think, from the last one was we didn't have artificial turf fields, and that makes a big difference in what the plan looks like.
Okay. All right, I guess we're down to unanticipated topics. Anything else, anyone else like, anyone else like to mention?
Yeah, sorry to bring, are people's emails working, the town email, is that, has that been working? Right now, I've been sending everything to both your, your new email and your personal email, until you all confirm that you've been receiving everything.
I need to reset my password.
Oh.
It was working, and then it kicked me out, so I'll pull it back with the IT.
Okay, okay. Everyone else is okay?
Same problem as Brian.
Okay.
I'm fine.
So I'd be happy to report that mine's working fine.
Oh, great.
I actually got disconnected and then reconnected, so it is easy to just call Christine Town Hall. The hardest thing was knowing what the web address was, it's like Outlook, whatever, three sixty-five. See, that's the thing.
So I have mine on Outlook, both on my computer and on my phone, and I don't go to that three sixty-five site, I just get it. I just set it up and they synchronize.
I'll comment to you when I.
They synchronize together very nicely, if I delete something in one place, it goes away and, you know.
Times we live in.
Who did that for you, Steve?
And I managed to do it all myself.
No kidding, good for you.
Some little kid, right?
Oh, yeah, that's for the next meeting.
Okay, we have any minutes?
Yes, you have the July eleventh meeting minutes in your packet.
Okay, oops, I did look at them, I don't know, I did not have any comments, does anyone else have any commentary?
Yeah, I have my comments, a second.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of seven eleven? Okay, sorry, a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to, if there's nothing else, do I have a motion to?
Sorry, one more thing, okay, one more thing.
There was nothing else.
One more thing, Westwood Day is Saturday, the twenty-third, I don't, typically. One more thing, um, Westwood Day is Saturday, the twenty-third, I don't, typically you've had a table out there, um, do you want to do that again? You don't have to. I know last year, we didn't really have many visuals, um, but in the past, you've kind of had a table out there where you take shifts and each one stays for about an hour and, um, kind of talks to people about projects, you know. Do you want to do anything, or do you have to?
I thought, like, two years ago, there was almost more of a, almost a mock town hall kind of theory that all the different groups are close to each other. I feel like we were kind of off in the middle of nowhere and we didn't really.
Yeah, we had, so in the past, we've done like a mini-town hall kind of area.
Mini-town hall, not a mock town hall.
But then, I think last year, there was a push to not have that unless you really wanted to, because it was more valuable to have the town departments or boards and commissions and residents to, um, help volunteer in other ways with some of the activities, rather than at the table. So it's up to you if you want to have a table, or if you, we would encourage everyone to, um, volunteer, like, there is something where, um, we have like a volunteer sign-up that you, that can sign up to different things, like helping with the.
I think that would be good to.
Train and stuff.
Volunteer and then maybe even, maybe people wear like a tag or something, all of town people that say that they're, you know, planning board or selectman or whatever, and I don't think people know who they are, but.
Theory.
It would be better to do these kinds of activities, I think, than, um, than just sort of standing around. I mean, it's, so you get good conversations with people, but I've kind of started to feel like Westwood Day, I'm not sure what there is to do there anymore.
Okay.
Well, we, we had some pretty good conversations, I thought.
We did, we did, but if we did decide to go with a table, do we have any ideas of what we'd go with?
Not yet, but we can think about it.
Well, we have, again, we have usually pictures of.
Yeah, usually have.
I mean, since last year, we have.
Projects that are, um.
We have, uh, the Brigham Women's.
Yeah, so, yeah, Brigham Women's, Del Frisco's is not yet, you can't tell what Del Frisco's is, is yet, so that's coming. The hotel will be just getting ready to open, um, so I think.
Or a Summer Street.
Have a bunch of shovels there for.
Yeah, so I guess.
There's always a few things to show.
Yeah.
And, you know, there always seem to be people that have questions and are interested. But I like the idea of having, uh, town officials have a name tag so people, they can be identified, just in case people don't know.
As I'm just thinking, like, the, um, like the bike, or is ped bike doing the bike helmet giveaway again?
So that's real no Thursday on that, did you?
I think they are planning to, but I haven't, I haven't talked to David.
Did you speak to David White?
No, because I don't really know.
Special today.
If you know him, yeah.
Extra apartments.
It's easy enough to call.
And extra, and extra twenty-five, twenty-five hundred cubic yards in your next EMM.
I mean, you could do, you could get very creative, actually, this is half, half jokingly, if we had the visual representation of what, um, two hundred yards of earth looks like. Because think about, that's the most, most, the driest thing that ever comes up here, but imagine just have a big, like, thing of hay bales or something, and it says, yeah, EM, what's EM, an EMM written on it in big letters, and everybody says, what the heck is that? It's like, oh, that's, that's how much dirt you can move before you have to go to the planning board for a special permit.
Man, we could take over the whole day with clever ideas like that, like, what is an acre? Like, what is it, what is a?
Okay. Well, I, I'm not a strong supporter of the table, I would say it'd be more fruitful for us to be out and about, but I'm not gonna steer the committee or steer the group any one way or the other, so.
All right, if you want to think about it a little more for the next meeting, I could send you the list of activities that they, that they have going on that.
But don't you and Nora want to be in some particular place, or do you want to be?
Yeah, well, last year, we signed up for like a certain activity, like, um, I handed out the maps, I handed out maps for people as they entered, and then I think Nora was at the like train, the little kids' train or something. Then there's like, they always need help with like the parking and shuttle or something like that.
Yeah, road race beforehand.
Yep, road race.
Things you can do with that.
Okay.
So I got an invitation and it says there's a parking lot, and I just seem to get a spacer, and I guess you just park at your house again.
Probably, yeah, the rates have gone up this year, though, I'm sorry, I have to warn you. Yeah, it's, you're all welcome to use my driveway again if you wish.
Extra space in your shared driveway.
It's not a shared driveway.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do I, may I have a motion to close the, close the meeting?
Make a motion to close the meeting?
All right, second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is closed.